The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, December 5th, 2022, 7:00 PM. We'll begin our meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilperson Moranti will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight. We do have a public hearing scheduled. I will ask the town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing for us.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, December 5th, 2022, in the council chambers of the municipal center in Plainville to hear public comments on: One, proposed amendments to ordinance, Chapter 106-11, purchasing articles 1 and 2, purchasing procedures, state and federal funds. The purpose of this proposed amendment is to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations Procurement Standards, Sections 200.317 through 200.327. A copy of the proposed amendments is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the town clerk, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this first day of December, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael, we have talked about this at our previous meeting, about these changes. Can you just give a very brief overview for those that weren't here to listen to that explanation?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, this is an opportunity to come in line and add a section to the purchasing that would line up with the requirements of the federal procurement. And so we want to make sure that we're in compliance when we're applying for any federal grants that are highly regulated than some of our local or state grants. And I want to have to recognize the work that Andy has done on that and certainly defer to him to any further detail, but it's as simple as just adding the language that we're presenting to the ordinance. So, we're not changing anything. This is a simple add.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for that. All right, at this point, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, please come to the podium, turn on the mic, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? One last chance. If not, no? Okay, thanks. I'll close the public hearing. Moving on to minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion to approve them, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the minutes for November 21st meeting, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports tonight? Rosemary?
No, none this week. Two weeks, we have library trustees next week, so.
Thank you. Mine as well is, the Commission on Aging will be meeting on Thursday, so I'll have a report at our next meeting for that as well. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Sir.
Just one quick, Wednesday night at 6:00, Santa will be doing a drive-through at Norton Park. It's going to be a park-and-watch type of an event. He's going to go through the park three times with the aid of the fire department, and I imagine we'll have some police presence there as well. But everyone's welcome to come down and wave and yell and, you know, if you have a list, feel free to give it to Santa as well. He'll take it with him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the reminder. Are there any other announcements or reports tonight that you wish to share? Okay, thank you. Moving along, appointments and resignation. We do have a police officer appointment, and what I would like to do before we do that is ask our police chief to please come to the podium, give us a little background information regarding our new police officer. Chief?
Sure, thank you very much for having us here tonight. You know, just to, once again, to give a little bit of background on our hiring process. As you know, we lost three officers this year. Lieutenant Peterson, Sergeant Markey, Rich Markey, and then Officer Slater. And so since then, we've been set on a mission to backfill those three positions, and I'm proud to say our very last person that we need to hire is sitting before us today. You know, bad news is, he has to go to the police academy. He'll start December 30th, and I think he's extremely prepared for that, and I think he'll have no issues with that whatsoever in that training. And that's the good news. But bad news too is, we probably won't see him for six months because he'll be up there running in the cold every single morning and probably doubting his decision when his hands are freezing off. But it's nice to have Matt Moran here, and I know it's a lifelong dream of his to become a police officer. I'll tell you a little bit about Matt. He grew up and went to school in Wallingford. He received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of New Haven. While there, he was involved in numerous clubs that had to do with law enforcement. He also completed internships while there with the Connecticut State Police, the U.S. Marshal Service, and he also worked with liquor control. He has worked in the Lake Compound Security Department for a number of years, achieving the rank of sergeant there. So he has supervisor experience, he has a background in criminal justice, yet he decided to go on and get his master's degree in education from Southern Connecticut State University. Then went on to become an elementary school teacher. He worked at several different schools. His last one, he did his last day on Friday, which was as a third-grade teacher in the New Haven School District. And now he wants to join us, and I'm extremely proud to put him before you. I think he's got the education, the experience, the drive, the work ethic, determination to be an excellent addition to our organization. So I respectfully request that he's appointed as our next police officer for Plainville. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. I wonder what's more threatening, third graders or being in a police department? One can only wonder. All right, thank you for the background, so I will ask for a motion to appoint, please.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Matthew Moran to the position of police officer effective December 6th, 2022, and as condition of continued employment, he must successfully complete all aspects of the basic police officer training program at the Connecticut Police Academy and the Plainville Police Department Field Training Program.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Matthew, would you like to say a few words? First of all, congratulations. We're very, very happy. Yep. We all know what a difficult job being a police officer is, and we have appointed a number of them, and I know all of them, I'll speak for myself, but I think the rest of the council agrees. It's a calling, not for everybody. It's impactful on your family, your friends, and certainly on you. So, we are most grateful for you to come to Plainville, and we wish you all the best luck and success in your training. So we would, if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
All right, good evening. I would like to thank the chief, the entire Plainville Police Department, as well as town manager, Mr. Paulus, and the town council for giving me this opportunity. It's a real honor, so thank you for that. And I will do everything I can to just look after the town of Plainville and to make it as safe as possible. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, and continued good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to continue with our agenda. If anybody needs to take a leave, we'll just take a little pause, and thank you again for coming tonight. Thank you to our police representatives as well. Bye, Chief. We'll continue on with our agenda, item number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to postpone the appointment of the officers for the fire department until the first meeting in January.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Let's see. All right. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments that are not listed on our agenda tonight? No? Nothing else? Okay, we'll move along. Thank you. Report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, hello?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good to see you. Do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay, thank you for being with us. All right, next item is report of the town manager. Michael, it's all yours.
Thank you, and good evening. So, I have a few items here, four, one of which is on the agenda later on for new business. That's the item three, treated and non-treated salt. But I want to begin with an update on the White Oak Development Project and take you through what's been transpiring on that project. So as you recall, at the last meeting on the 21st, the town council approved the Tigen Bond Contract Amendment Number Two, allowing for further testing and delineation of soil and groundwater contamination. The amendment has been executed by the town manager and sent to Tigen Bond, who will begin scheduling efforts and equipment rentals, as noted in the proposal. We've been told there's a two-to-three-week lead time on scheduling, but weather outside of significant snowfall should not be a hindrance to the completion of that work, and work will be covered and paid for under the award grant funds. In fact, the both Tigen Bond and representatives from Manafort will be on-site tomorrow to be looking to evaluate their findings there and to do some little more scope investigative work tomorrow morning. Tigen Bond has produced the final copy of the updated hazardous building materials assessment, the HBMA report, and subsequently, our economic development director, Cal, has met with Tigen Bond and Manafort Newport Realty to review the plan of action for the building's remediation according to the proposed development plans. These discussions will also lay the groundwork for Tigen Bond's updated remedial action plan, the RAP, and a document included within their original scope of work. Tigen Bond will be on-site, as I mentioned, tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have additional information. Tigen Bond has also completed the environmental condition assessment form, the ECAF, application, which is necessary for the voluntary remediation program, VRP. And I know this is like a whole alphabet soup of acronyms here, but that's the state's way of designating these various programs. So, we're moving along with those applications. Manafort Newport Realty has applied in the abandoned Brownfield cleanup, the ABC program, which limits the extent of the investigation and remediation of contaminants to the property boundaries. This program is also significantly reduces M&R's future liability in the eyes of the state and is a paramount step in the process of the town's purchase and the subsequent sale of the White Oak property. Per new state guidelines limiting approvals to two years, the town has submitted an extension request for our own ABC acceptance from DEEP. In conversations with DEEP and DECD, they would like to review and approve both applications, both the towns and Manafort Newport Realty, simultaneously to align future renewal dates. The hope is we will hear back and be in place to move forward with purchase and sale of the property outlined within the access and opinion agreement and LDDA, respectively, within the first quarter of 2023. And I think Mike would concur that I think that's what we're looking at in terms of, you know, first quarter, February, January, February, hopefully, optimistically, but we'll keep you posted on that. An updated property title search is what they're working on, Mike and the attorney from the estate. And survey work, Michael Perry finished up. The review is underway by M&R team, and clearly, early indications are positive in there not being any significant rebuttals or contest of what has been provided. This will aid in ensuring the future transfer of the site is smooth. Attorney Mastriani continues to review the work with DECD to finalize the financial assistance agreement documents, and once completed, awarded grant funds will be officially released to the town, making it possible to seek reimbursement of eligible costs. And as a reminder, the state has noted the town can seek full reimbursement of all eligible projects' expenses dating back to the original grant award dated of June 24th, 2021. So, there's a lot going on there, a lot behind the scenes that people don't see, and again, you know, getting into the building, doing the assessment, a lot of paperwork and a lot of communications with the state. There's a lot of moving parts, and it's a complex project, and I think we're making headway, and we'll continue to keep pushing for those dates to stay in place. Next item I also wanted to update the council on is the landfill closure, also making great strides there as well. The closure process is moving forward, and recently with approval of the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection approval of the Materials Acceptance Protocol, MAP, as they call it. That happened, it was approved on November 3rd of this year. The approval of the map allows the town to begin accepting truckloads of acceptable material on-site as part of the capping process. Well, with notification and approval from DEEP, trucks and material could be arriving this week. They're not, but they gave us the approval that we could start that process. It begins today. So again, consultation with the state on review of those materials coming in. They can begin to be stockpiled on-site before anything gets moved around in terms of part of their capping plan or their capping process. LEA and the town representatives have met and continue to meet on-site to discuss the removal of stockpiled equipment and materials that are currently on the landfill surface, and a plan is being developed to remove the equipment materials on-site to reduce any conflict with the trucks delivering the material for the capping process. The roadways department will require to remove some equipment and material off-site to be stored at the airport vacant lot. That's where we're going to have a temporary lay-down site there, and then whatever's going to come back, will come back at a later date, but it allows the highway department and roadways department to do what they need to do without conflicting with getting in the way of the operation of truckloads coming in. And then LEA received notice from DEEP that the closure plan should be formally approved later this month. I'm not that overly optimistic that, given what we've seen with some of the other projects in the state, I think that might be too optimistic, but December would be great, don't get me wrong. That would be fine. And that's the report for the landfill closure process. Item three, as I mentioned, is appearing later on the agenda for an action item for both the treated and non-treated road salt. The town purchases salt on an annual basis for the roadways department as part of their winter operation, and it's part of what we do to keep the roads passable, and they use both treated and non-treated. And the difference is that the non-treated is basically rock salt, which is typically used in warmer conditions with temperatures at or above 25 degrees Fahrenheit. And the treated salt is combined with an organic enhancer for de-icing, and is most effective in colder conditions with temperatures at or below 25 degrees Fahrenheit. So, that item is under new business for the purchase of both treated and non-treated salt, separating those contracts to do different areas in terms of the state contract for one and the council of governments for the other. So that'll appear on your agenda later on for new business. And fourth is the winter policies. I thought would be an opportune time to remind residents that as winter approaches, the town wishes to talk to you and remind you of the policy and ordinances regarding the following items. We've done a revised mailbox policy that will be posted. In essence, the mailbox policy, from time to time, there are incidences where mailboxes get clipped, and in our policy, it is only when the equipment touches or strikes the mailbox. And we make the distinction in terms of the snow and ice that may be coming off a plow that may destroy a mailbox, and that's been the policy for quite some time, but we've just kind of fine-tuned it a little bit to put the details of that policy because we require that residents have a sturdy post and box and that it's able to weather a New England storm. So it would be prudent for anyone that doesn't really think about their mailbox and their post, that it possibly could be rotted or somewhat rotted and unstable or un-sturdy, and in fact, with a little bit of pressure from flying snow or ice, could break snap off. So it's due diligence now and take care of, but if there is an instance where our plow happens to hit it and strike it, then we do replace it. And we have the ability, because we have, the trucks are maintained and operated with cameras, so we know if we struck a mailbox as well. So, and we make that distinction and hope that folks will also take a look at the policy that provides a link to the postal service's requirement about not intruding or impeding into the roadway. They have regulations around that in terms of where the mailbox can or should be and where it shouldn't be, and that is correct, right, in the roadway? And so, that's part of the revised policy as well. So we've put a little effort into that and putting that out there, as well as the actual responsibility of snow removal and ice from sidewalks. So that is there, and not removing it from the sidewalk and putting it or throwing it in the public roadway or street, that's prohibited, and so we've put that on there as well. The reminder, as you recall, the reminder to keep fire hydrants clear from snow would be a great help from residents as we go through the winter season, and we've put that out in the sewer bills, if you recall, and I think most residents will have a little sticker or flyer that they can put up and remind. And also the prohibition on the all-night parking that began December 1st that runs through April 1st. So all of that is up on the website and will also be shared in social media. And in these winter policies, just another note that comes from our roadways department superintendent, that in the past years, the town has used outside contractors to help in those really heavy snowfall, lizard-like conditions and snowstorms. Typically, we use 12 to 15 snowplow contractors, but there is a shortage and there is a problem that he doesn't think he'll get more than eight within this season. So it'll have an impact in terms of timing, in some cases could potentially impact the timing and the timeframe for snowplow removal. He's doing the best he can, I'm working with him on it, and we've had some ideas and bent it around, but I just wanted the council to know that it's one of those things you don't really think of, but the insurance industry has been a problematic, a problem to the private plow contractors, and of course, we need those insurances for them to be able to work for us. And so, it's impacted us, and we just wanted to put it on your radar and let you be aware of it, and we'll do the best we can to try to close the gap and get to the level where we think is the right level and to help us. So, it's one of those sign of the times that just, I'm told anecdotally that the state itself is looking for more than 200 plows, employees for running their plow trucks. And, you know, I think it's just one of those shortages that we're all dealing with in terms of the employment realm, but I wanted to pass that along. And that's all I have for my report, and I'm happy to turn it over to Andy for happenings. I'm sorry, I didn't even pause for any questions, I'm sorry.
Any questions for the town manager and his report? I just wanted to make a comment. It's regarding the landfill closure. This was talked about when I first began on the council eons ago, and I know that Councilman Wazarko has been part of numerous conversations about how to close the landfill and how to do it, and it's been ongoing for a very, very, very long time. So I just want to say, it's nice to see it's going to actually happen.
Yeah.
And we're going to get it done. It's been talked about for well over 20 years, so I guess it's time to have it go. That's my only comment.
Can I just ask a follow-up, a question? Do we have a time limit as far as once we start accepting material to actually physically close it?
That's a very good question. I don't-
You can certainly get back to me-
Yeah, I can certainly get back to you. I don't know, but I would think we're going to go rather quickly.
Okay.
But again, it's also dependent on finding the supply, but again, I don't think that should be a problem, given the fact that we're probably in a good position where development sites or redevelopment sites and brownfield sites are looking for areas in which to go to. So, from that perspective, that shouldn't be an issue, so if the loads come in, and the, well, first of all, let me back up, still waiting for the final plan to get approval from the state, that'll be the, you know, then we'll be on our way, but at least they've given us the interim step of accepting material in the lead-up to accepting that plan, but that those truckloads coming in shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Michael, one of the biggest concerns of the residents of Plainville is leaf pickup, and I know we've had conversation about it. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because I know that if leaf pickup were to disappear, we would have this council chambers and the hallways filled with residents.
Yeah.
Again, if you can just say something.
Yeah, we're going to incorporate and figure out a strategy whether or not we can use the capped portion for continuation of leaf collection, and that's the indication I have at this point. I want to see and confirmation in writing that we can do that as part of the plan, and if not, we're going to have to develop a plan to do that. But I don't see why, I'm told other communities do that, so I don't see why we would be singled out and we couldn't do that, but I have not seen it in writing, so we're going to have to look at that. And in terms of just overall leaf collection this season, I think, I don't want to steal any thunder that Andy might have, but fourth round, I think.
Yeah, yeah, here, you want to?
No, no.
Okay.
You'll get to it, I won't say anything.
Can I pawn off the happenings?
Yeah, I'll try to get you an answer, Chris, on that, in terms of timing, and I think we'll be fine with leaves as well, because you're right, David, it's a major issue. I mean, it's a service that we both have learned is a very valued service for the community, and that's great, so we'll continue that.
Thank you.
Anything else for the town manager? Okay, Andy?
Sure, thank you. So I'll start with a leaf collection update. This will be the last leaf collection update of the season. The roadways department is completing their fourth and final round of leaf collections, and it'll conclude early this week. As of Saturday, the roadways crew collected 442 loads of leaves from town streets, and just for some understanding, last time this year, the crew picked up 379 loads, so this year, the town saw an increase of 17% of leaf collection debris compared to last year. So overall, though, this year, there were no mechanical issues, no breakdowns, and there were only two days out of the entire season that the crew lost from collecting leaves due to rain. So, pretty smooth operation this year, and as we've talked about in the past, a lot of the issues was just in the fact that it was a dry summer and the leaves fell earlier than in previous years. So, leaf collection should be done this week. From the police department, on Saturday, December 10th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, the Plainville Police Department will be holding their Stuff a Cruiser event at the Connecticut Commons Shopping Plaza on New Britain Avenue in Plainville. Members of the community are encouraged to bring new unwrapped toys, clothes, and gift cards. All donations go to benefit the local chapter of the Salvation Army. From the revenue collection office, the supplemental motor vehicle tax bills are due in January 2023. This tax is issued to cover any registration changes that occurred between October 1st, 2021, and September 30th of 2022. Also from that office, the second installment of real estate and personal property bills are due in January of 2023. No bills will be sent this year, or will not be sent for these payments. Typically, for second installments, bills are not sent to residents. Reminders will be sent, though, via the town website, an email back- Reminders will be sent, though, via the town website, an email blast, and legal notices. So. That's that. From the senior center now, we have quite a few events here. For all programs regarding the senior center, you can call the senior center at 860-747-5728. And unless otherwise noted, all programs are free and open to the public. So the first is tomorrow, December 6th, at 2:00 p.m. Decorate the Christmas tree and sing Christmas carols. So you can get into the Christmas spirit by decorating the senior center Christmas tree while singing holiday songs with the senior center choral group. You can enjoy hot chocolate cookies and being with some friends. File of life being prepared for, being prepared in the event of an emergency. This will occur on Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. File of life gives first responders medical information when patients cannot, including allergies, medications, and contact persons. You can visit the senior center to pick up your free file of life card. And if you have any questions, you can talk to an EMT, Kara Keyworth. The senior center is hosting a Help for Veterans event. This is a new veterans, this event is being hosted by, or this service is being hosted by the new Veterans Service Officer from the Connecticut Department of Veterans Affairs. His name's Eric Vickers. He'll begin taking appointments for assistance at the senior center on December 7th. And if you'd like to schedule an appointment or if you have any questions, you can call An event seated, an empty, an event regarding an empty seat at the table getting through the holidays will be hosted on December 8th at 10:00 a.m. The holidays may be difficult and different due to an empty seat at the table. So you can join Bill Pilkington, Supervisor for Pastoral and Breathement Services at Hartford Healthcare at Home, to discuss the challenges that the holidays can bring, learn ways to provide solace and healing, and share ideas for establishing new traditions. COVID-19 Vaccine Boosters Shot Clinic is open to the public. This is on Monday, December 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the senior center. Griffin Health will be conducting this. This has been a series of clinics that they've had over the course of the past few months. And walk-ins are welcome. You could also make an appointment by calling the senior center. And you can receive your first vaccine and all the boosters and so on from there. So that's from 10 to 3:30 on the 12th. Caregiving Connections will be on Tuesday, December 13th, at 10:00 a.m. This is a support group for individuals who face challenges and frustrations of providing 24/7 care. The senior center is hosting an AARP Smart Driver class on Thursday, December 15th, from 12:30 to 4:30. This is essentially a class to help teach and help remind individuals of defensive driving strategies and provide some refreshers of the rules of the road. You may also qualify for an insurance discount. The Memory Cafe at the senior center will be on Thursday, December 15th, at 2:00 p.m. Memory cafes are safe and supportive social gatherings for people with changes in their memory and along with their care partners. So you can relax and socialize with others experiencing similar life challenges. And the last is Michaela's Garden Seed Packing Day. This is on Monday, December 19th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And the Pettit Family Foundation will be packaging Michaela's four o'clock seed packets at the senior center. And community members are welcome to join at any point throughout the day. And that is all I have with the happenings.
Okay, thanks. That was a lot.
Yes.
We appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Andy with his report tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. That concludes our report from the town manager. Moving on, our next item is public comment section. During this time, we welcome anybody from the public to please come to our podium, turn on the mic, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? John?
Thank you.
John Kislick, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. I have a packet for every member of the council on Podruski Park and Pond. You know, I believe that pond and park is made for the people for enjoyment and not to be a goose sanctuary. Last meeting I gave you that manifesto of Lisa Lozier, so I don't know if you got to read it. But there's a problem with geese. I want to read something real fast. Geese can produce one to two pounds of droppings each day. A typical Canadian goose, they poop 28 times a day. It takes only one goose on a one-acre pond to overload the water with phosphorus. Now, we had that fish kill a few years back, and I know it was what do with hot weather and the water got hot. But this phosphorus and this goose problem really, really contributed too. And Lisa is trying to turn this into a goose sanctuary. I have minutes from five-minute meetings there. For one of them in January, she made a motion to ban fishing at the pond. And that's a conservation issue that's really important. They voted on it and they had a ban fishing effective immediately. And then she was on a roll. She tried to ban the banning of goose bans, you know? And I guess that got shut down. But you have to read these minutes and see there's something wrong with this person. And she is trying to control how this park is operated. She wants to close back entrance. She wants to ban boating and people enjoy the park. And I have, one of my reasons I'm so hot on this, I have a history with this pond and park. My father used to be there in 1930s with the Catholic Church when the nuns owned it. I used to ride my bike there 60 years ago from MacArthur Road to go fishing. I brought my daughters there to fish and to play. The CPOA did volunteer work there. We had our picnics there. And to me, this woman is trying to take away the best parts of this park and pond. So I wish you'd look through these things. There's five meetings. And I really would like to ask this council, since you had the authority to appoint her, to please remove her as a member of the Conservation Commission. I know I talked to Conservation Commission members who actually left because of her attitude. I know my time's up, but I have one more.
I have 30 more seconds. That's just a heads up. Go ahead.
Now, this means no disrespect to anybody on this council. But you're going to vote tonight on chair and vice chair. And Councilman Underwood was the top vote getter in the election. And to me, that's an honor for the people to have enough of confidence in you and belief in you to make you the highest voter. And I would like to ask this council to appoint Councilman Underwood as chair for the last year of your term. To me, it only seems right and fair. He's vice chair. He's worked his way up there in the council. He's been on the council before. He's a dedicated, lifetime Plainville employee. And I think he really deserves that honor. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
John, just one thing. It talks here about goose poop on the pond. We had a problem with that years ago.
Right.
And I believe they put a cannon out there to scare them off. At the time, they were more concerned about the ball fields with all of that.
Well, see, they went from the ball fields, now they're in the pond. And the town did have an egg addling program once. I don't know what happened. They said Dave Emery was trained, and then I guess not enough of people were trained in it. But I think this Lisa had something to do with getting that stopped. And that's a federal program to addle the eggs, you know? And you need a special training to do it. And I think the town should do that again. That'll help with the population during their egg-laying season. But the town has to really do something because the pond is getting worse and worse. You had the engineers out here with the fish kill. They told you what we have to do. And it's really, really expensive. It's in the millions to dredge it and stuff. But the geese have to be controlled, in my opinion. So I wish you'd look at this and see what you think. But this woman's out of control. And for her to tell me they're going to block the back entrance where guys can bring in a canoe or a kayak or family wants, this is wrong. And Mark DeVoe has told her she doesn't have the authority to do any of this. And she just ignores everything. You can see it went from month to month to month. She's relentless. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else wish to speak? Last chance. Okay, thanks. I'll close the public comment section. We do not have any old business to take care of, so we are in our new business section. Item number one, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt an amendment to Charter 106, Article 1 and 2, purchasing from General Code to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations Procurement Standards, Section 200.317 to 200.327.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to award bid number 2023-12, treated rock salt under capital reach and purchasing. Council bid number 735 to Morton Salt, Inc., Region 5, located in New Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of $94.47 per ton.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to award bid number 2023-13, non-treated road salt under state contract number 20PSX 0085 to Morton Salt, Inc., DOT Store Area 38, located in Rocky Hill, Connecticut, in the amount of $67.94 per ton.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair, I turn this motion over to Deb Tompkins.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Establishing and Charging a Charter Revision Commission. And I'm going to read the resolution.
Thank you.
Be it resolved this 5th day of December 2022 by the town council, the town of Plainville, duly assembled, that a charter revision commission be established pursuant to CGS 7-190, consisting of seven members as follows, Republicans and Democrats, Quinn Christopher, Dan Szyselski, John Gasparini, Patrick Kilby, Joe Rosinski, Dana Schnell, and Anthony Tarazio. Be it further resolved that said charter revision commission shall submit, submit, I'm sorry, its first draft of said charter revision to said council on or before June 5th, 2023, and be it further resolved that said charter revision commission shall consider the following provisions in our revised charter. Number one, remove the residency requirement for the town manager position. Number two, increase the terms for town council members to four years. Number three, stipend for town council members. And number four, any other section or chapter they deem necessary.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Thank you for reading all of that. Are there any comments on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary.
Just wanted you to point out, you know, for public consumption, a couple of things. First of all, the, I think the operative term in that last paragraph is consider. There's no preordained decisions that have been made on the items that were mentioned.
Correct.
And the second point I'd like to mention is that the public will have ample opportunity during this process. There will be a number of hearings for the public to also give their input. So I thought that was worth mentioning.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Mr. Wazarko?
Just two questions. I'm just curious which council members asked for the Charter Revision Commission to consider a four-year term for council members and which one asked for the Charter Revision Commission to consider a stipend for the council members?
Well, I actually had discussed increasing the terms and having it looked at.
Okay.
And in terms of the stipend, as you had pointed out previously, this had been brought up on a previous charter revision commission. And I think there was some agreement among all of the members here that that is an item that they would like to see considered as well. It is common in a number of other communities, so we would like to look at that.
And just for the record, I did not, I was part of no decision to have this considered. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Oh, I misunderstand. Okay.
No, it's all right.
Okay. So again, as Councilwoman Maranti has mentioned, these are some ideas that the council is asking the commission to take into consideration. They can certainly look at the entire charter. And, you know, if there's things that they feel need to be amended or updated and so forth and so on, that can certainly happen. But these are specific things that are not currently in our charter that we would like to have them have some discussion on and get back to us.
And Madam Chair, just again, I'd like to point out that there's no preordained decisions that have been made on these either. These are things that will be studied and considered.
Absolutely. And I suspect that they will be reaching out to other communities that may have these types of items in their charter and in their form of government. So these are topics that we're hoping that they will delve into and get back to us. And I believe if the council members have any thoughts about some of these things, we could also communicate that to the group as they start their work. Is that right?
I think so, but I defer to the town attorney in terms of the process, but I think that's correct.
Okay.
Sorry. I believe that's correct.
Yes, absolutely, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I have input into, all council members can have it.
And won't we bring them in and have them talk to the council at some?
I believe at some point, that's part of the schedule, that they would come back. Yep.
And Madam Chair, too, for public information, it's a very prescribed process and multi-step process where they, back and forth between the council and the commission. And once again, I'm really emphasizing there's going to be opportunity for the public as well.
There is an opportunity for that. And we had in our previous packet gotten a suggested schedule of meetings. And I'd like to thank our town clerk for putting that together. It is something of an aggressive schedule. And the reason for that is to try and get all of this work done and approved by the council to set forth on the referendum for next November for the voters to approve or not. So that's why there is something of an aggressive schedule. It looks like two meetings a month through the month of June. And there may be a little bit of extra time in case they need that, so.
They can add more.
They can add more.
Obviously. My suggestion is for them to have an organizational meeting.
Yep.
Now that they've been appointed, they'll get an introduction letter. They should get together, set a schedule, set a timeframe for themselves.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So that is, that will be out there for them to consider as well.
Also, I suggest that the town manager, when this goes to referendum, to break it down. Not one vote determines the whole charter revision. Each item that's on the charter revision to be considered should be broken down, one through whatever the number is, so that when the vote comes down, it's not a yes or no vote to determine whether or not this passes or fails.
So individual items to be voted upon.
And that's up to us to decide how it's worded, right? Whether it's one question, whether we break out eight questions, that's up to the council to decide.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments regarding the Charter Revision Commission and the work that it's going to be taking on? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number five, motion to, may I have a motion to elect a chairperson?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to elect Catherine Paglisi as a chairperson to the town council.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wazarko.
For those of you that don't believe in Christmas miracles, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Kislick tonight. I understand that there were some behind-the-scenes conversations that have happened previous to this meeting. But as far as I'm concerned, when we were here last year, 13 months ago, you know, we had an agreement. I voted in favor of that at the time because of that agreement. I am disappointed that certain members of the council are now reneging on that agreement. I do feel that Dave deserves to be chairperson. I'll vote in favor of the motion. However, I do want it on the record that I do think we're making a mistake by going in this direction tonight. I think Dave deserves it, being top vote getter. He's been more than, he's compromised, I believe, when he didn't have to. And again, I think he's getting the short end of the stick. But being that, as it may, you know, I agree with the comments Mr. Kislick said tonight.
If I may, Mr. Wazarko, just for your information, the Republican caucus unanimously agreed to these nominations. Unanimously, I repeat that.
And I understand that, and that's why I'm not going to bring up any private conversations that occurred, but.
Well, I don't think you're privy to them.
I bet you I can guess 80% of what was said.
You weren't there. Any other comments?
I wasn't there, no. But I, you know, I. I wasn't there, no. But I, you know, I, I'm going to leave it at that, at this point.
Yep. Wise choice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to elect the vice chairperson, please?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Okay, was Jake first?
It's probably of him.
Okay. Go ahead.
Five seconds.
Go ahead.
Motion to elect David Underwood as vice chairperson.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Again, unanimous consent of the Republican Caucus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, David. You're welcome. Item number six, please.
Madam Chair?
Whoever wants it.
Motion to approve the tax refund as listed on your agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Michael, do you have any other items of interest for us tonight?
No, I do not.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about? All right, we do not have an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.